Good evening. Sorry to keep you all waiting. This January 11th, 2018, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence and the performance of the National Anthem by the Centerville High School Wildcat Guitar Ensemble under the direction of Bill Burke.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Set afire. For the United States of America and the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, talented students, and thank you, parents, if you've brought your children. And do we have the principal of Centerville High School here this evening? Maybe not? But thank you all. It is always a wonderful treat, because those of you who don't come to our meetings very often, every meeting we do have a group of FCPS musicians who come and do the National Anthem for us, and it is truly wonderful. I believe Dr. Phyllis Pajardo and John Putram are also in the audience from the City of Falls Church, so welcome.
City of Fairfax.
City of Fairfax, sorry. Get the right place. Okay. Fairfax. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on January 11th, 2018, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting as a motion. Moved by Ms. Corbett Sanders, seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor? It is Evans, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Darrenat Kofex, Keys Gamara. Abstention. Ms. Dahlia Polczek. Thank you. And away from the table is Ms. Schultz and also Mr. Wilson, but they will be with us in a moment. A few announcements before we begin. Ms. Hines and Ms. McLaughlin will not be here this evening. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under upcoming School Board meetings. The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select School Board from the full menu, then click on the Watch Live button on the School Board Meetings webpage. And please turn off or silence your cellphone. First, I will call on Mr. McElveen for a resolution on Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Mr. McElveen.
So I would like to read the resolution on Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Whereas students in Fairfax County continue to fall victim to the enduring and growing threat of human trafficking, a threat that remains largely under the radar, understood little or not at all by many students and a majority of the community, this widespread complacency endures despite the expanding reach of traffickers around the world and here in our county, with criminals skillfully exploiting the lack of knowledge of students and their families. And whereas human traffickers continue to seek out students that are vulnerable in county middle and high schools and even elementary schools, a group which includes nearly every student at some point during their academic career, so that victims have been identified from every high school, most middle schools, and multiple elementary schools across the school district. And whereas these targeted children and young people come from every background and social and economic group and are pursued in person at all places that students gather or spend time, including shopping malls, restaurants, and bus stops, and online through virtually every social media application, especially those that mask the user's identity. And whereas the trafficking awareness curriculum pioneered by FCPS with the support of Just Ask Prevention Project remains the gold standard for building a realistic sense of the danger among students and their families and educating them on warning signs to look for, with other districts across the nation continuing to reach out to learn from the example set here. And whereas clubs and groups of students from county high schools and middle schools have continued to grow and thrive, holding awareness campaigns about teen sex trafficking and providing invaluable support to community events such as the Just Ask Walk Run for Freedom, and through these efforts have inoculated thousands of their classmates against the threat, resulting in students who are awake to the danger contacting law enforcement on multiple occasions, leading to severe arrests. And whereas working in conjunction with these dedicated young peoples, educators, parents, medical professionals, law enforcement officials, civic organizations, and the business community are also playing an invaluable role in spreading the word and protecting the community with a shared goal of establishing a community free from this dire threat to our students and caring for the victims. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board again joins the County Board of Supervisors in recognizing the month of January 2018 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Fairfax County and supports the efforts of all those who are seeking to eradicate human trafficking and end its devastating impact on our students and community. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Moon. Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your resolution?
I would be delighted to. So today is actually a very special day. It not only marks Human Trafficking Awareness Month, but today is actually National Human Trafficking Awareness Day. And in honor of this day, I have presented my colleagues with blue flowers. Blue stands for, is the color for human trafficking prevention. And I'll also be presenting those to Ms. Jody O'Hern, who has spearheaded this effort in the county over the past several years. And it's truly been the delight of this Board to raise awareness of this issue for the past, I think this would mark the fourth year doing this. And so I would also add that this Board continues to take the issues of sexual assault and harassment extremely seriously. On January 22nd, staff will be presenting us with a report at our work session on the efforts that are being undertaken in our school district currently, and also plans for the future in how we combat those issues. And obviously, those are part and parcel of the issue of sexual, of human trafficking awareness. So with that, I'll turn it over to my secondor.
Nothing to add, Madam Chair.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, did you want to add to this?
Yes, I do. I want to thank Ms. O'Hern for all of the work that she does on this very important issue. It's an issue that we have been, we've included it in our family life education curriculum for the past couple of years. We were one of the first systems in the country to do that. And we also have students at many of our high schools that have started Just Ask Clubs, and the purpose is really to foster an environment where there is greater awareness of the risk associated with, with human trafficking, and making sure that students are aware of them and that if they see something, that they say something, if they see something that impacts them themselves, or if it impacts other students in their environment. And so I would encourage students and parents to look into these efforts and to spread the word, because it is a really important issue, and it's one that spans socioeconomics, geographic regions of the county. It is happening everywhere, not only in our county, but across the country. And so it's an important issue. And coupled with that issue is being aware of what's happening online, and many of the principals have been sending out messages about being safe with electronic devices, and I would encourage people that they should look at that guidance and incorporate it into their conversations with their students and with their community members, because the only way that we can effectively combat human trafficking is through awareness and not being embarrassed or shy about talking about the importance of this issue.
Mr. McElveen.
At this time, I would like to invite Jody O'Hern, Kyle Beckman, and Bill Wolf from Just Ask Prevention, and all those in the audience who are here in support of this resolution, to join me at the dais for a photo with the Board.
Yes, I believe we have not voted yet. All right, all those in favor of the resolution? And that is unanimous with Mr. Wilson and Ms. Schultz away from the table. Next, I will call on Ms. Evans for a resolution. We are unfortunately saying goodbye to the wonderful Kristin Michael this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I would like to ask Ms. Michael to please come to the podium so we can talk about you.[1447.16][1447.16](Laughter). Thank you, Ms. Michael. It is my honor and privilege to offer this resolution in honoring Kristin Michael. Whereas Kristin Michael has worked for Fairfax County Public Schools for 12 years and six months in different roles, including budget analyst, budget coordinator, director of the budget, and assistant superintendent of financial services, and whereas she has consistently demonstrated a sincere commitment to all stakeholders of Fairfax County Public Schools to present clear and concise financial statements and budgets, which collectively support student achievement and the FCPS portrait of a graduate to which we aspire all students. And whereas she has been a passionate advocate for FCPS by generously giving of her time and participating in any and all activities, and whereas she has been an exemplary leader of financial services and has guided her department in the implementation of numerous strategic initiatives over the course of her tenure, and whereas she has given countless hours of her time to respond to school board members, members of the community, her colleagues, and other leaders in Fairfax County government, and Fairfax County Public Schools, and whereas she has worked with determination and tireless collaboration with school board members, principals, administrators, teachers, staff, and families to ensure and maximize the success of students in Fairfax County Public Schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its deepest appreciation to Ms. Kristin Michael for her outstanding service and dedication to Fairfax County Public Schools and to our students and community members, but also congratulations and best wishes on her new career endeavor. I so move.
Her second by Mr. Moon. Would you like to speak further?
Just briefly, I would just add my couple of personal comments as well. Ms. Michael has, as all Board members know, been the consummate professional, and we just so appreciate everything that she has done for us and for the Fairfax County Public School community. One of the things we could always rely upon was that whenever we would call or write, that Kristin was right there with, with an answer that we could always count on its accuracy and her being so responsive to all of us. And as an example, we know that tonight, later on, she will be the star of the show a little bit later when she has the presentation of the superintendent's fiscal year 19 budget. So we are going to get, squeeze the very last moments out of Ms. Michael and her time with us. So I do want to thank you for everything that you've done for us and just wish you the very, very best.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just adding a few more words to that. Ms. Michael, what am I going to do without you? It's a huge loss for the school system, but I'm happy for you that, Madam Chair, Fairfax County Public School System is fortunate to have had so many good assistant superintendents for financial services. I can go back to someone like a legendary car junker, Chuck Woodruff, Deirdre McLaughlin, and also our COO, Susan Quinn, and you, all excellent assistant superintendents for financial services. But you, among all others, has something very special, very unique about you is your composure, your demeanorism in public, how you can deflect and diffuse tensions in the room. It's not just your detailed knowledge and information you have about the financial aspect of the school system, and you're really, you know, your dedication, willing to work 24/7, willing to answer all those questions, not only from school board members, but members on the county Board of Supervisors and public, et cetera. You do that all the time, constantly smiling. That's something I, as a board member, as a school board member, still learning to emulate. I will really miss you, and thank you for all your service.
I'm going to call for the vote, but there are other members who would like to speak. So first, we will vote on the resolution. All those in favor of honoring Kristin Michael. That vote is unanimous with Mr. Wilson and Ms. Schultz away from the table. Now I have Ms. Darrenat Kofex, then Ms. Dahlia Polczek, and I suspect there will be more.
Ms. Michael, I don't know if you remember when I met you and Ms. Quinn, but I remember I was on a superintendent's budget task force, and I came to you with some questions that were buzzing in the community, and you and Susan were so gracious and so open and so honest, spent time with me. I was not on the school board. I was not thinking about running for the school board. I was just a citizen, and I was able to meet with you as a representative for my district. After that meeting... After that meeting, I didn't know you before that, but after that meeting, I respected you so much. I was so enamored about the way you were able to take very complex data and explain it and make somebody who was new to the budgeting process understand it and then be able to go and retail that to their community. So I continued as I worked with you for the last six years. That respect has only grown. Mr. Moon talked about your personality. You are professional. You are dedicated. You have an incredible work ethic. And even when you go, I had the pleasure of serving with, as the chair of the school board and as the budget chair. And when you go into your office come March, April, May, it is, there's so much work there. And you walk in and there's just so much paper and so, because so many questions are asked of you, and you look the way you do now. This is my job. I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to do it. I want your energy and your positivity to stay with us, but I know you must move on. So I wish you all the best. We will miss you, but thank you so much for your dedicated service for all these years. And it's been an honor to work with you.
Ms. Polczek?
Trying to not get teary. Ms. Michael, this came as a huge sad shock for us, but I'm eternally happy for you. I know this is, Falls Church is very, very lucky to have you. I can't even speak tonight. And so much has been said about your work ethic, your professionalism. I was thinking about you today. We were talking about stereotypes with my students. And my stereotype of financial experts is generally a bit more dry. And I think you are an unsung hero for our kids. We know that we can do nothing without the budget. And you have your heart, your soul, your energy, tireless, and your kindness, and especially your patience for us, all of us, and the community. I'm already dreading my first budget meeting without you in the community. I know we will do well because you will leave us in good hands. But you were what I hoped was a hidden gem. You're not hidden anymore. You have been plugged, but we know you will do great things personally. We'll greatly, greatly miss having you here, your leadership, always setting it through example. And I hope that, and we know that others see that. So you will be greatly missed, but we look forward to seeing everything you will do next door at Falls Church. Thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Kristin, I met you under similar circumstances as Mrs. Darrenak Kofax. And it was one of those wonderful moments in the Sherwood Hall Library. I think it goes back eight or nine years ago. And you were able to just be that calming influence on a community that was worried because it was right at the time of the recession hitting and we knew that we were going to have some difficult budget years. And that really led me to understand how your quiet leadership, your patience, and your willingness to listen were skills that were not typically recognized as finance professionals, but you certainly have taken it to a whole new level. I also wanted to let people know in the audience that, you know, the budget documents that Kristin would prepare weren't just any old budget documents. We were actually recognized internationally because of the leadership that you took in how you prepared them. And so that is greatly appreciated. And you will be missed, but more importantly, you need to know that you have cheerleaders. You have people that wish you well, are going to be able to proudly say, oh, she was one of ours. Because once you're part of FCPS, you're always part of FCPS. Just ask Dr. Bajardo over there, she'll tell you. And you certainly know that when you join Falls Church, you will be joining another one of ours. And so that powerful alumni group called FCPS Alumni, or Professionals Alumni, you will be one of the leaders in it. And we are ever so proud of what you've accomplished here, and we know that you'll accomplish even more with Falls Church and any other system you decide to go to. So it is not goodbye, it is bonne chance.
Mr. McElveen?
Kristin, this is a sad, sad day for all of us. And I was certainly hoping it would not come until after I was long gone from this board. But as I reflect back, I remember with great happiness and joy the many nights, mornings, afternoons that we spent out in the community over the past six years, in rain, shine, and yes, even on snow days, presenting the budget to the community. None of us would ever have to worry about preparing too much for those meetings because we could always count on you to know every single line item in our budget. And no matter how tough the question, as Mr. Moon alluded to, Kristin would always answer it with a very straight and composed face. And one thing that many people might forget is that Kristin actually spearheaded our search about two years ago for a new director of the Food and Nutrition Services Department. And as I reflect back on my time on this board, I think that of all the things we have done, that effort pushing for fresh, healthier food for our students has had the most tangible impact on the daily lives of our students. And it continues to, we continue to see improvements, and we'll do so after you leave us. So thank you to you, your family, for all the sacrifices you have made, all the long hours you have spent out with us. And I think all of us are very proud that you will be adding some new Cs to your business card, not only as COO, but also you're adding a C in FCCPS.[1023.54][1023.54](Laughter) So they're very lucky to have you, and we do hope you will come back to Fairfax County later. Thank you.
Ms. Vetticanda?
I'll be brief. So I met you this year, and throughout the budget process, Ms. Michael has been so incredibly helpful to me. So this is my first year of actually doing any budgetary work, and you've always been there to patiently explain the answer to every single question, regardless of how basic it is, which is so helpful when you go back to SAC and all the students also have questions, I'm able to answer them using the information you gave me. So thank you so much for your patience, and I think I join everyone here when I say good luck in your future endeavors.
All right, Kristin, it's my turn. Someday, we'll have to talk to Dr. Noonan. He needed to ask permission if we were going to let you go. But you're the combination of your deep knowledge of every aspect of the budget, combined with an unusual personality, as everyone has said. And you never say no about going to very difficult community meetings. You went with me every single time. And you were able to calmly explain difficult, aggressive questions. And you could always answer it, not only with professionalism, but because people trusted your knowledge and trusted that you really were looking out for our children. And that always came across. And it was like, how could you, whether people liked how much money or how much money we were spending, or didn't have, or wished we had, and all of that. But their questions regarding what was in the budget, they were answered truthfully. I have never seen anybody with that kind of a combination who is also a financial person. But it is so unusual and so much appreciated. And as Mr. McElveen said, often we go into so many difficult budget meetings, and if you were by our side, we knew that the meeting would be okay, even if there were 200 angry people for whatever reason. You would calm them down, and you would assure them that at least the answer was right, the numbers were right. So we are very, very grateful for your service to Fairfax County Public Schools, to our children, to our teachers, and to us. And we relied on you so much. And we're angry that you're leaving.[1184.58][1184.58](Laughter) We can all say that, but that's okay. They better treat you well at Falls Church City. If they don't, you can come back. We would be happy to have you back. But at any rate, we are just very, very grateful. And you are truly unusual. So thank you for all that talent. I believe we are going to come and have a picture with you, and if you want to share some remarks.
Madam Chair, I would ask that at this time, Ms. Michael and her family, friends, and the leadership team, join us up here for a photo. And also, we have a couple of items that we'd like to present to Ms. Michael as well, including a beautiful clock, which I believe is even accurate in terms of its time, which is (laughing). So I believe at this time, we can take that photo.
Great, thank you. Okay, Ms. Michael, you get a chance to say a few words.
Thank you so much. I've truly appreciated all of the support that I've received from the school board, the superintendent, the leadership team, and all of the staff throughout Fairfax County Public Schools. I feel in my life, you know, they often ask the question, do you feel you're lucky? And I feel that I'm very fortunate. I feel that I'm fortunate that I have a great family that's supported me. I've had great career opportunities. The school system is incredible, and I feel very honored to have been able to represent the school system. I've gotten incredible support from the people that I've worked for, the people that I've worked with, and the people that I've supervised. I feel I couldn't have been any more fortunate than to have worked for Susan Quinn. Every day, Susan encouraged me to do better and to learn more and to continue to grow. And I hope that I've been able to share that same approach with many people. So most of the time, when I'm standing up here, I'm getting credit for all of the great things that I'm presenting. But I would be nothing without the great people that work for me. Right? The work that they do every single day, while it's often not seen, it has a direct impact on students, right? And the great things that the school system does for our entire future. Right? So the people that work for me are second to none. Every day, they come in and they work tirelessly, and I really wouldn't be standing here before you today if it weren't for them. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity. It's been a true honor to serve Fairfax County Public Schools, and I look forward to staying engaged as a citizen and a resident of Fairfax County. So thank you.[1551.11][1551.11](Applause)
The next item on our agenda is citizen participation. Tonight, two citizens have signed up to address the board, and we also have one video testimony. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with a decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home. So language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. Our first speaker is Mr. Park, to be followed by Jay Simone Lockwood. Mr. Park?
Good evening, honorable school board members, and thank you, Mr. McElveen. That was a wonderful segue for your resolution. Knowing you would not allow me to speak unless I chose one of your three predetermined topics, I chose the house sale by the foundation of applied technical education. Critical to making sound financial decisions, elected officials must have an ample reservoir of political capital so that citizens can trust their elected officials, that they're operating on the collective best interest. Unfortunately, FCPS and this school board are actively liquidating both their political capital and their integrity by refusing to acknowledge and remedy the untoward events that transpired at Lake Braddock. Three WSA 9 investigative reports and three Washington Post articles have detailed the appalling claims of sexual harassment against students, blatant reprisal against fact witnesses, and multiple sham FCPS investigations endorsed by this school board. Apparently, the school board and FCPS mistakenly believe that their constituents still have the confidence in their decisions and actions despite the repeated lies, denials, and inaction. Taxpayers and constituents have a legitimate expectation that their elected officials make decisions that meet the reasonable person standard. No reasonable person can read the media articles detailing sexual harassment at Lake Braddock and believe that nothing happened. No reasonable person can believe that the Lake Braddock principal was not fully aware of the allegations made in December 2015, and 2014, and 2013. No reasonable person can believe the FCPS leadership actions taken against an identified fact witness was anything but retaliatory because reasonable people understand that innocent people don't retaliate against witnesses. No reasonable person could review FCPS's mediocre investigative materials and believe they were sufficient. No reasonable person can believe that FCPS adhered to its sexual harassment regulations or the 2014 DOE voluntary resolution agreement to ensure the safety of the students under its purview at Lake Braddock or any school. No reasonable person could, would find it believable that newly hired school superintendent reviewed hundreds of pages of documents in a few days, yet arrived at an uninformed decision to retain a principal and personal friend whose actions repeatedly failed to meet FCPS regulations. No reasonable person can believe a school board- No reasonable person can believe a school board repeatedly crying wolf over multimillion-dollar budget deficits while permitting a superintendent to self-negotiate hush money payouts and non-disclosure agreements to negligent employees and reprisal victims from a bottomless slush fund. So, in closing, while you sit idly by and watch Rome burn, I hope you take my thoughts into consideration when evaluating this sale because clearly you have sold out the players and families of Lake Braddock girls' basketball team long ago. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jay Semaine Lockwood.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Braybrand. My name is Semaine Lockwood. I am a Fairfax City resident and parent of two children in the Fairfax City School System, one of whom has the Level 4 designation, and I'm speaking tonight in reference to 5.02, the recommendation to open new advanced academic center at Lanier Middle School. I want to ask Board Members to please approve the proposal that Lanier become a Level 4 center. I'm confident, based on my many interactions with faculty and administrators at Lanier and on my child's experience this fall, that Lanier has the leadership, resources, and commitment to offer a very strong center program. In addition to AEP curriculum, Lanier offers excellent after-school programs that support advanced students' academic interests, such as Model UN and National History Day, to name only two. Having the option to be part of a Level 4 cohort at Lanier has meant that my child can benefit from the creative inquiry-based curriculum within which he thrives while cultivating the friendships he developed in elementary school and may well continue in high school. I understand that the proposal for you tonight is to have Lanier become a Level 4 center gradually over, I believe, a couple of years. I know that a slight majority of respondents to the community survey favored this plan, 53 percent versus 47 percent. I would like you to consider, however, how that decision may affect the ease with which Lanier might be launched as a Level 4 center. I am interested in seeing the program at Lanier be as successful and as well-supported as possible. And so, I would like you to consider assigning all Level 4 students, if you do approve that the center go forward, that all Level 4 students living within the Fairfax High School Pyramid attend Lanier for next year. And I ask you to consider this because I think it's important that the first official cohort may be as robust as possible, may be as diverse as possible, may more quickly become a community of learners that will collaborate through high school, and so that the administration and faculty will have a more precise sense of how many students they will be serving and thus know how best to deliver their program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd also like to note that Toby Sorenson from the Fairfax City School Board has also arrived, and Mitch Sutterfield is also there. Thank you. I think everybody is here from Fairfax. Thank you. We now have a video testimony presented by four students, Carter Elaine, John Medvid, Luke Advist, and Karav Serran, who are also having to be here this evening. So, we'll please show the video.
Hello. We are Hardin High School, FTC Team 519. Our subject of concern is based upon Regulation R 3866, which prohibits students from joining STEM clubs like ours, who either do not attend a high school associated with STEM or are in eighth grade. We would like to explain why this regulation should be amended or repealed. First Robotics, FIRST meaning for inspiration and recognition of science and technology, is an established worldwide organization which includes over 33,000 teams worldwide.
First Robotics encourages students to work through varying challenges together using scientific processes. Each team must design, build, and test a robot before competition day.
In a society where technology is rapidly evolving and advancing, FCPS students and parents would love any opportunity to give valuable experience in STEM. On First Robotics teams, students are able to collaborate with each other and learn from knowledgeable adult and student mentors.
Students who participate in First Robotics are able to acquire many skills related to STEM, such as programming, shot proficiency, compromising, delegation, and leadership. These are encouraged to apply lessons learned in the classroom and take their knowledge a step further with the guidance of team mentors.
Colleges love seeing kids involved in STEM programs, such as FIRST, and know that they will be the next generation of leaders, innovators, and CEOs.
Many high schools do not have a competitive after-school STEM program. Regulation R 3866 explicitly prohibits participation of students not enrolled at host high schools. There are even Fairfax County robotics teams who have opted to leave the FCPS school system to support a more inclusive membership.
FIRST programs are independently funded and do not drain any FCPS school funds or resources, aside from after-school classroom space. Seventh to 12th grade is the allowed range of students for the program that our team participates in, but currently, we are disallowed from having middle school students on our team.
On behalf of FTC Team 519 and several other affected teams, we strongly urge the Fairfax County Board of Education to amend Regulation R 3866, or to allow an exception for STEM programs, so that all students who are interested in pursuing STEM programs may participate, regardless of what school they attend.
An ideal situation would be if all FCPS high schools had more inclusive self-funded STEM clubs. If this were the case, then students would be able to simply attend the closest high school. Another solution would be to allow an exception for STEM programs.
Consider perhaps the majority of club members must be enrolled at the host school. Allowing students to attend classes at multiple schools for academic purposes is not a new idea and occurs every single day. Why shouldn't the same concept be applicable to after-school clubs?
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, students. Actually, I would like to stand those who were starring in this video. We're always very happy to have students speak to us. Thank you very much. Now, we have Student Representative Matters. I call on Ms. Fetaconda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I would like to commend the Boy Scouts from Troop 129 and any other Boy Scouts in the audience who are here earning their citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. If you all could stand to be recognized. So, on the matter of tonight's new business, the proposed budget, I just wanted to bring some perspectives that I've heard from students around the county. So, there was an article in the McLean Highlander about a while after the $50 extracurricular activity fee was originally imposed, and the student pointed out that many of the clubs that are affected by this activity fee are clubs that already require their own additional expenses. For example, Model UN conferences, students are already paying about $20 per conference at local tournaments and close to $300 for national conferences. So, some of these additional fees only hurt the clubs from their having increased membership. So, I'd like to propose that for the next year implementation of this extracurricular activity fee, we wait until December to track who is participating, so that we give students enough time to try out extracurricular activities, see if they're interested before they can commit to an activity, so we're not discouraging kids from starting an extracurricular activity. Or, on the other hand, we could offer a freshman waiver of the activity fee altogether, so that freshmen don't feel compelled to not start an extracurricular activity in high school and have the opportunity to make new friends and learn new skills through the extracurricular programs. As we've seen, the students in the audience clearly did benefit from their First Robotics experience, and I wouldn't like for us to deny that from any student. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fetaconda. You will actually be pleased with Dr. Braybrand's budget. Now, I will call on Dr. Braybrand as we begin the presentation and discussion of the FY 2019 proposed budget. Dr. Braybrand.
Good evening, everyone, School Board Members, Chairman Strauss, members of the audience, thanks for coming out tonight, members out in the Fairfax community who may be watching. It is my honor and privilege to present to you this evening my proposed budget for fiscal year 2019. As I've shared with you before, it really is an honor and a privilege to be able to return to Fairfax County, where I served as an intern, a teacher, an assistant principal, a principal, and a member of the leadership team as an assistant superintendent. I have returned to a school system that I love, and I look forward to serving our students, our families, our staff, our entire community. And I'm presenting to you tonight a budget that I believe gives us the resources necessary to meet our community's expectations on those services that we will provide collectively, and the excellence that we expect in Fairfax County schools around those services. I'm looking forward to a collaborative relationship with the school board tonight and with the Board of Supervisors in the weeks and months that follow in this budget process to approve my recommendations. And I want to thank everyone, and especially this board, for your ongoing support of a world-class school system. Tonight really is about our FCPS. As I shared at the leadership team in August, it's not my FCPS. It's not even your FCPS. It's ours. It's our students and teachers, our principals and support staff. It's our community, our business community, our nonprofit community, our faith-based community, all of the folks who call Fairfax County home. This is a budget that speaks to them. It's really about tonight putting our Fairfax family first. All of us want to see an outstanding school system, a premier school system. In fact, the premier school system in this country, if not among the best in the world. And I believe the focus you're going to see tonight is exactly where it should be, and it's on people. People. We've just spent all this time talking about Krista and Michael before this budget. It is people that have always been the Fairfax difference. We have more talented teachers, more talented principals, central office, leadership team members, school board members, community members in this place that we call Fairfax County than anywhere else. And we need to keep them here. We need to keep them here. So, this budget you'll see will be aggressively working with the foundational part of what any school system is. The first indicator of quality is the quality of the teacher in the classroom, and that's why we need to aggressively move ahead toward market compensation for all of our teachers. And this budget is going to do that. We have a teacher shortage right now in Virginia and across the country, and we've got to say loud and clear to teachers in our county, across the Commonwealth, across the country, that you need to come to Fairfax, where you're going to get the opportunity. We want the best and brightest coming to Fairfax, where you'll get the opportunity to have the sort of compensation that every teacher deserves for the work that they do. This budget will also include new salary scales for all of our other folks who are not teachers, and provide a step increase for all eligible employees. Now, if you go to the next slide, you can see our budget needs to be driven by our strategic plan. This board has worked with my predecessor, Dr. Garza, around the strategic plan ignite that has four key areas: student success, and students always have to be, students and student success has to be our first marker of success as a school system; also, a caring culture, a culture that cares about our kids and teachers. But you know what? To have both of those things happen, we have to have the best and brightest. We have to have a premier workforce. And I just saw the other day what I think needs to be almost the new motto for Fairfax County when it comes to premier workforce. We need to hire you to retire you. We need to find the best and brightest from around this country and world. We need to hire them in Fairfax County, and we need to retire them in Fairfax County. They need to spend a lifetime of their work and career doing the work in our system with our students and our parents and our community members. The fourth area of resource stewardship, yes, these are public dollars. Everybody, whether you have kids in school or not, are stakeholders in our public school system. The bottom line in my heart, I believe this school system, this school community, has always valued outstanding education, and if we put the best and brightest every day in front of our kids, we put the best and brightest in our school leadership and our central office, people will see the return on investment that they are getting. And it's the most precious treasure that we have, our kids, who represent the future of Fairfax County, which is why we need to bring the best and brightest in and get them to stay. As you go and look at the next thing on this budget, it's a $2.9 billion budget. It's a 4.3 percent increase over the approved budget of last year. 86 percent of this budget is driven around instructional programs, instructional programs, which is the core of what every school system does. As I've shared with you before, the strategic plan priority is around employee compensation. This is a budget based on people, not programs. You will see that we have some required cost drivers around student enrollment, and also our healthcare benefits, and I'll talk about those later. But the large majority of this is around instructional programs and supporting compensation for our people. In the summary of changes from last year's approved budget, you see that we begin with an increase in revenue of a little over $18 million. We are asking for a county transfer of $96.9 million. And that money, as you can see, is going primarily toward employee salaries. With this focus on our workforce, I believe we'll be able to get the results that everybody in this community expects. When you look at the budget, employee salaries is front and center, as I've shared. First, the first component of that is a step increase for all eligible employees. I want to say and recognize that employees that are at the top of their salary lane are not eligible for those steps, but the majority of our employees are. I also want to recognize to the board and to the community that I know we, prior to my arrival, there was discussion about teachers that were on the BA lanes and them not getting additional steps. As you know, when I arrived here, I did give them an additional step, which is provided here. I had used one-time money when I arrived, and it is now embedded in this budget ongoing at $1.3 million. Many of you know, and I'm sharing with the community tonight, that we've talked in work sessions this fall, I presented a plan of a three-year plan of a 3 percent bonus for those teachers on those BA lanes that are not receiving additional steps. And I know that between now and the approved budget in May, we'll be having those discussions. The bottom line is our eligible employees on all of our scales, who are employees on all of our scales who are eligible, will receive a step increase that's almost $44 million. The next component of employee salaries is over $53 million for our teacher salary scale enhancement. We need to get our teachers to market scale compensation, and this move will be able to do that in two years. This is moving halfway to getting our teachers to where they need to be. It also has a component of about $17.9 million, as I shared earlier, for those that are not teachers, to do the salary scale implementation for those. And that includes folks like our school-based administrators, our clerical and custodians, and psychologists, and social workers, and central office. They're part of that Fairfax family, too. They're part of the promise of excellence that we've always had as a school system, and we need to take care of making sure that they have a wage that is adjusted to the market. I want you to see the current teacher salary comparison chart that we have up here. You can see in blue is the FY '18 scale, in yellow is the current market average, and you can see we are still below currently that market average. The green line is my proposed budget, and you can see that green line is getting us to almost this year's market average across the lifetime of career service for our teachers. It's slightly below at the very end. Of course, remember, our viewpoint on compensation, we want to look at career earnings and get our teachers as much salary at the beginning of their career and let that get to continue through all of their careers, so they stay with us. One of the things that this board has talked about is making sure that we're within, as part of this market-based compensation, is being within 95 percent to 105 percent. This is getting us closer to that market average. Now, some may say, in some of the discussions we've had at the board and even with the Board of Supervisors, that this is about salary. What about total compensation? You know, when you look at total compensation, including something that we have in Fairfax that's very unique called ERFC, which is an amazing, amazing benefit... that's very unique called ERFC, which is an amazing, amazing benefit that supplements the retirement for our teachers and many of our staff, that total of ERFC and those benefits that we provide is about 4% of total additional compensation. So really, even when we're getting to market, even if you add in the benefits that include things like ERFC, if you're already at the market, 4% more is still within that range of 95 to 105% of wanting to be competitive in the market. So the budget I am proposing by no means puts us above the target range that this school board has asked for in terms of what we're trying to do to keep people in this school system and attract them to coming. I'm very excited about our new ERFC executive director, Eli Martinez, who's just come in, who is going to do an even better job of marketing the amazing, amazing benefits that we have with ERFC, and I look forward to sharing that with you in the future. Employee benefits beyond simple salaries, I've talked about a little bit here. I just want to outline some of the key components in the budget. The VRS, which is the retirement across all school divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we're getting a little bit of savings there for a lower rate that's been adopted by the VRS trustees. Our ERFC, there is no change in our rate this year. Our FCERS is the retirement for many of our employees in our school system who are actually in the county retirement. That rate has gone up a bit to the tune of about $3.5 million. That includes folks like our school bus drivers, our custodians who participate in the county's retirement system. As you can also see, health insurance continues to rise in Fairfax at a clip of about 5.5%. That's commensurate with what we're seeing here in the area, in the market, and also nationwide. We need to continue to do everything we can to be competitive around health insurance, but also making sure we have that lens of effectiveness and that we're doing and implementing cost-saving measures. And we continue to benchmark our benefits around copayment levels and benefit levels to make sure that we're still market-relevant and we're still market-competitive. The next component of the budget is around enrollment and student demographics. A little under $16 million is what is in the budget for this. As you see, we have a total projected enrollment in the budget I'm proposing of about 189,724 kids. That's an increase of over 700 kids from our approved budget last year. What are we seeing in that increase? One, we're continuing to increase, but at a little bit lower rate than we have in past years. We do see, though, within that increase, an increase in the number of our kids that are free and reduced meals eligible. We this year had an increase, this budget shows an increase of 4,000 students or almost 8%. And part of that reason is Virginia allowed us to participate in a pilot to directly certify kids who are eligible for Medicaid to be eligible for free and reduced lunch. The reality is, folks, these kids have always been in our schools, but through this new pilot from the state, those kids who've come from families that are Medicaid-eligible have become automatically eligible for free and reduced lunch. So we've really been able to identify additional economically disadvantaged students that had not been identified previously. And you know, I want to pause right here because sometimes I think, as we talk about Fairfax, especially as I left and came back, that people who are not from here see Fairfax as only the land of wealth and only the land of students who are all upper-middle-class students. I want folks to know tonight that if you looked at the number of economically disadvantaged students in Fairfax County public schools, we'd be the seventh-largest school division in Virginia, just on those students alone. Those students deserve every opportunity to have the same access, the same opportunity, and the same outcomes as any kid regardless of their financial status. And so we need to continue to be aware in our budget as we see these cost drivers around this enrollment at the local level and the state level, that our policymakers need to understand these kids' needs must be addressed. We see for our ESOL students, our English-for-speakers-of-other-language, a small increase, a little bit of over 1% in this proposed budget. And special ed, we've seen an increase of about 951 students or an increase of about 3.7%. So we're continuing to see growth in the division. We're continuing to see growth in the number of economically disadvantaged kids in ESOL and special ed, and we need to meet our commitments to those students and those families. There are some other expenditure increases for you to be aware of. We are bringing back, after many years in hiatus, tuition reimbursement. We are a learning institution, and we need to have a marker that says we want to support employees who want to continue to have a learning mindset, a growth mindset. We're going to give particular focus in this budget for tuition reimbursement to be around those teachers that are in those BA lanes and not eligible for additional steps, to be able to go and start master's cohorts and be able to move to a different salary lane. We've actually, as many of you know on the board, in our mid-year, made some adjustments to let some of that master's cohort work start now. In fact, we've already had our first informational meeting around that program. I also want to share with you a little additional expenditure around support for our preschool teachers, our FESEP folks who do amazing work. Their salaries and benefit costs, we need to add a little bit more in for them. By the way, I want to share, while it's not budget-related, I have to tell you in the last six months of being here, hearing and seeing the waitlist to get into our preschool programs is really tugging on my heart. And I want to share with you, as part of this budget, one of the things we've done with working together and collaborating, Dr. Duran, is moving that preschool class size up by one to get 100 more kids off the waitlist rolls and into our preschool programs. Part of our additional expenditure increases is around math instructional resources. Now, we get state money for those instructional resources. We have reserve dollars for those, but we needed just a bit more to complete the package around math instruction for all of our grade levels. We also have a little bit of money around contractual increases. That's a little bit over or around $2.3 million. And we have some additional federal money for special education funded by IDEA of about $1.5 million. Some reductions I want to talk about in this budget. One reduction that often occurs, and I certainly remember it before I was ever a superintendent, is base savings or something that we sometimes would call salary lapse. When a more senior person leaves or retires from Fairfax and we hire someone who's a little bit coming in with less experience, there's often savings due to that position turnover. We've identified about $26 million savings there. We expect the work that Dr. Duran has been doing around the Fairfax-Doll and ESOL Transitional High School, work that he started last year. We expect savings a little bit of over $1 million on that, and we'll be sharing that information with you in a future work session. The one opportunity here, really, that's a placeholder, is we're going to be able to increase our equitable course opportunities for those kids and maybe even be able to reduce a little bit of our administrative cost as well. Speaking of administrative costs, I did, as you all know, earlier this year, share some reorganization savings in the top leadership that is in my office. We eliminated a chief of staff position, and I eliminated assistant superintendent of Equity and Innovation. Many of the board know, but I want to share with the community that at mid-year, we did placeholder some of that savings. Dr. Duran will be presenting a work session in March around our equity plan for next year, and some of that savings may be included in the plan that will be presented. So stay tuned for that. We also have some reductions in the sense of savings, really, based on projects in the CIP for next year. Not all dollars around our renovation can come out of the CIP. We have a certain amount of operating dollars each year that we give towards supporting the CIP projects. And next year, based on the projects that we have, we'll have a little bit over $1.4 million less in dollars that we need to support those projects. I want you to know in this budget, as much as we move to get our teachers to market, which we need, as much as we move to take all the folks that are on non-teacher scale and get them to a market-based scale, we would still be a school division, even if this entire budget is adopted, and it will be adopted, will still be a division that is like Goldilocks porridge, just in the middle. Not the most expensive, not the least expensive, but in the middle. And certainly, in the school district that most looks like us, we would still be, in terms of our cost per pupil, lower. So we continue to be a system that keeps that effectiveness lens front and center as we make our budget decisions. When you look at our revenue summary, one of the things that continues to stand out is our need for county and state support. Together, it's over 95% of our revenue, and frankly, when you pull out the state, the county transfer is almost 72% of where our revenue comes from. I am excited about the collaboration that's been going on, and I appreciate that this county, at the government level for many, many years, certainly as I grew up professionally in this county, knew that great public schools was the essential first ingredient in a great community. And I am confident that this work will still continue. As we continue to work and collaborate with our Board of Supervisors, we need to let the state know that the great work that's been done over the last four years needs to continue as a new administration takes charge in Richmond. I did have a chance earlier this week to meet with Governor-elect Northam personally and spend a few minutes talking to him about the great work he did as lieutenant governor in helping us catch up with state funding, and that I hope that he'll be accelerating state funding for public education in the years to come. Because, folks, here's the reality. Inflation-adjusted, we are still less dollars from the state in per-pupil K-12 direct aid funding than we were in 2009, almost 10 years ago. We're still inflation-adjusted behind the state support that they gave us then than what they give us now. And I know we can and will do better. In terms of the revenue picture, as I shared, our beginning balance is a slight decrease. We ultimately want to get our beginning balance down. Our county transfer we're asking for is $96.7 million. But remember, what we're talking about between our budget, which is roughly about $2.7 billion, and the county's budget, a little over $2 billion, we're talking about $96 billion and an almost $5 billion enterprise between the two organizations. A very, very reasonable request. This is an increase about paying our people the salary increases necessary for market-based compensation for our teachers and support employees. We're also looking at state revenue growth of 5.1%, which would be over $22 million. Sales tax, almost $4 million. Federal aid, the 1.5 grant money that we already talked about, and I want to say, we're still assessing federal budget impacts. They're still unknown. It's a moving target. Fairfax City, a little bit more out of the tuition contract. And I want to share, Neha Rika, I'm glad you shared your concerns earlier about the student activity fee. I know I've only been here six months. The board had hard decisions to make last year when I wasn't here around the budget, and I respect those decisions. But I also feel, as superintendent, in my first budget, I have, and I've reviewed those fees, I've talked with some board members, I've talked with all board members, and in my heart, and I believe in their heart, it is time to remove the high school extracurricular activity fee now. It needs to leave. Kids should not have a barrier when they walk into high school. Our extracurricular is the secret sauce that makes Fairfax County public schools better than school districts around the country. And we can't have a barrier for kids who have to upfront $50 if they want to pay to play or to join a club. As a former Model UN sponsor myself, that was an opportunity, a club that transformed lives. It transformed my life 35 years, 40 years ago, is 35 years ago, let me get my years straight, as a high school kid. And every kid should have the opportunity to walk in. All of our doors should be open when it comes to sports and clubs, and I'm confident that this school board will follow in reopening those doors for every kid in every school in Fairfax County. The governor's budget was released on December 18th. Overall, the governor's budget has a little over $8 million more in state aid than what we projected. That's from the re-benchmarking and a decrease in the LCI, the Local Composite Index. For many years, was going up and up. This year, we got it down just a bit. We had the decrease in the employer contribution rate for VRS. But I got to tell you, even in the state's budget, no additional supplement for compensation next year for any of our teachers or support staff, none. Our sales tax estimate is a little bit over $5 million projected. The reality is, folks, this is the governor's budget projected or proposed in December. We're not really going to know the state impacts until about March, when the General Assembly finishes their work, and we will recommend adjustments to state revenue when the approved budget is adopted by the school board in May. And I'll have the updates by then for this board on what the actual numbers are going to be. Looking ahead, we have challenges. We have got, though, to keep employee compensation is our core division priority. People make the difference. Teachers make the difference. Principals and central office folks make the difference, and we've got to keep doing that. And we've got to keep pace even as the market continues to evolve. We've got to stay market-competitive. We allowed ourselves to get behind the market. This budget is catching us up to the market, and we have to decide when we get to that market compensation level that we're never going to get behind again, and that will remain a challenge. We have challenges still as our student enrollment continues to grow, and we still see growth among kids with real, real needs, special education needs or ESOL needs, or kids coming from an economically disadvantaged background who cannot be disadvantaged in a classroom. In fact, they can reach the full potential of their lives as much as any other kid if we put the resources in place to help them make that potential a reality. We still need to work on strategic plan investments in student programming, and I will be, as you know, we've been working together to really review the strategic plan, prioritize the strategic plan. And of course, this budget's biggest piece is that around premier workforce, but I believe there'll be some additional things that will come in the strategic plan that we'll need to look at in the out years, and also critical capital and infrastructure. We know that the $155 million a year in CIP does not meet the needs of our folks, and we've got to keep working on it. I just brought back someone who was an administrator in this county in the 80s. In fact, was a principal in the early 80s. I took him to West Springfield and took him through the very front entrance, and the first thing he said to me is, "This place hasn't changed one bit since I left." We can't have schools where they've been left behind, and we have too many schools still in this county, a flagship division in the Commonwealth and country, that have been left behind. It is time to have game-changing strategies around CIP, and I'm confident, in collaboration with the county and their new county executive, that we are going to find ways, just like we're rapidly advancing our teachers and other staff to market, that we're going to rapidly advance to a new vision of how we do capital improvement that gets all of our 21st-century schools. We're a quarter of the way through the 21st century, and we have some schools that still look like they're in the 19th century. It's time to make that happen, and I'm confident we'll be able to do it by working together with new ideas and new approaches. The uncertainty of the impact of federal education funding, as I shared with you before, will continue to exist each year, but we're going to work with our local congressional delegation to make sure that our voices are being heard even in the halls of Congress to give the support that we need and to honor the original impact. We mentioned IDEA and the 1.5 million. Do you know, when that law was passed, Congress said they would support 40% of IDEA cost, and those numbers are 17 or 18% today. and those numbers are 17% or 18% today, under half of the needs that the law says. So those are things that we're going to continue to work on. As I shared with you before, many funding needs are not needed, our capital improvement at 155 cap. We can and we will do better. We've got 19,000 kids in temporary instructional classrooms. That's not acceptable in Fairfax County Public Schools, not in a system that means business about excellence, not in a system that means business about equity. We can and we will remove the backlog of all these renovations based on that cap, and I'm confident that we're going to be able to do it. It's not included in this budget, and I recognize in six months, many of you would like to have that solved. We're going to solve it sooner than later in the months and years ahead. Enrollment growth is going to continue to be one of our challenges. We've got to keep up with where we're seeing rapid enrollment growth around this county, and we've got, we've got to simply make sure that happens, and it remains a funding issue, as I've already shared. One of the other things I want you to know is, there are some investments that we need to make in our instructional systems. Again, many will be tied to the strategic plan, some are the operating systems we've had, and they're just simply growing old, just like our classroom facilities and some of our schools are. And these are around library and professional development and our student, college and career planning software modules like Naviance, curriculum and assessment portals, and learning management systems. These are not included in this budget. This budget this year doesn't include either some of the preventive maintenance, which I know has been a longstanding issue, and Jeff Plannenberg has told me about, and Marty has too, that we've got to pay attention to, our buses and computers and school board replacements. This is not in the budget, and it's a limitation, but we've started in this budget with putting our people first and putting compensation, market-based compensation, front and center. As I've shared with you these challenges, though, I believe every challenge can be overcome when we effectively collaborate. And I am going to be a leader who's going to collaborate with everyone, local, state, and federal, to work together to advance Fairfax County Public Schools in the years ahead. Just this year, for the first time ever, I'm told, we had a new presentation methodology before the Board of Supervisors. The county executive presented his slide, then I presented my slide. The county executive presented his needs, then I presented on behalf of Fairfax County and you all our needs. We shared on one chart all of our needs as institutions, and that kind of collaboration, that kind of transparency is how we can create good governance in our school system and in our county for this community, and the community should expect no less. We've already got a joint budget work plan that I'm proud that Susan Quinn and Kristin Michael have helped jumpstart, already working at mid-level levels and higher levels around budget planning and shared services and our capital improvement program, and we've made changes that you've even recognized this year in how we've presented the capital improvement, both to you and the Board of Supervisors. We're doing more around legislative advocacy, because we know if we speak with one voice, we'll have more of an impact. We're going to continue the staff collaboration at every level. I'll be meeting monthly, every month, which is a repeat, I'll be meeting monthly with the county executive, and I'll be meeting at least quarterly with his key leadership team and my key leadership team, so that we can continue the staff collaboration necessary. We will need to continue to partner together as leaders if we're going to solve the challenges that we face. The budget timeline is similar to what it's been in the years past. You can see the different dates around when the county executive presents and the joint Board of Supervisor and School Board meeting in later February, the advertisement of the actual tax rates in March, the public hearings, the markups, the ultimate time in May where the school board, you all, will approve this budget, the FY 2019 approved budget, and then by July, the process begins again. I hope that everybody becomes involved in the budget process. Attend school board meetings, watch the meetings, if we can go to that next slide about being involved. Speak at a school board meeting, speak at a board supervisor's meeting, and a lot of times, I've got to tell you, over the years, the speaking has been about something that we're cutting. This isn't a budget of cuts. This is a budget of investments, and we need to come with the same passion, the same intensity to talk about our investment in kids and our school system as we do when there's the potential for cuts to our system. So I encourage those who've always come, come again. To those who've never come, it's time to come and talk about putting the Fairfax family first is the right way to go. It's the right vision. And I need you to know, I don't know if I've shared it with this board yet or not, but I'm sharing it with you now, last night, sometimes timing is everything, a teacher wrote me with nine years in this system. The teacher enjoys being in Fairfax, but found, based on his own salary, couldn't afford to buy a home in this jurisdiction, had to move to a neighboring school district. He shared with me last night, Dr. Braybrand, what I've seen you saying, what vision that I see you're sharing, that it feels like you're talking about, is the vision that I want to be a part of for the rest of my career. Dr. Braybrand, I am telling you, last night, I've been here nine years, but the remaining 21 years of my 30-year career is going to be in Fairfax County Public Schools. That's one employee down and 39,000 employees to go. But it's true, everybody needs to believe that they're valued and that we want folks and we want to keep them. We want to keep them here teaching our kids, we want them living in our community, and we've got to have market-based compensation for all of our folks to do it. They shouldn't have to teach in our system and live somewhere else to be able to make ends meet. So I hope folks will come and speak to the power of putting our people first, of putting our folks front and center with market-based compensation, and I believe if we do this together, if we jointly share the power, the joy of being in Fairfax County, the joy of having an amazing school system that does amazing things every day with people you can't find everywhere else. And folks, I'm not making it up, because I did leave. The talent in this school system at every single level is unmatched anywhere else in the country. It's said over and over again, but I know it to be true, because I've left and I've come home again. It's time to come home in this budget and celebrate our FCPS. It's not my FCPS, it's not your FCPS, School Board, but it's ours, an entire community, and we need to celebrate everything that we are doing to make this school system the premier school system. I believe this budget is the beginning of expanding our belief in our people and moving, continuing to move in the right direction so that Fairfax County Public Schools is a beacon of hope for all public schools across the Commonwealth and the United States. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for an excellent and spirited presentation, and I think we adopt this as the budget of investment. I think that's our, that's our rallying cry for all of us. Thank you very much. The board will be discussing the FY 19 proposed budget at a work session on January 22nd. Citizens may address the board at the Budget Public Hearing scheduled for January 29th at 6:00 PM here at Luther Jackson, and speaker registration for the public hearing opens tomorrow morning at 6:00. So we invite the community to help us and help us advocate for our children, for our teachers, so that we can indeed move forward with this budget of investment. So again, thank you very much, Dr. Braybrand. Next item on the agenda is the recommendation to open the new Advanced Academic Center at Lanier Middle School, and I will call on Mrs. Palchek for a motion.
I move that in order to contribute to the efficiency of the school division, the school board approved the establishment of a new Level IV Advanced Academic Center program in Fall 2018 at Lanier Middle School, and also adopt the following people assignment plan. In Fall 2018, Lanier-based Rising 7th and 8th Grade Center-eligible students currently assigned to Rocky Run Middle School will be afforded the option to attend the new Lanier Middle School Level IV Center or their current Level IV Center at Rocky Run Middle School. In Fall 2019, Lanier-based Rising 7th Grade students currently assigned to Rocky Run will be required to attend Lanier's Level IV Center. Rising 8th Grade students in Fall 2019 would be afforded the option to attend Lanier Level IV Center or their current Level IV Center at Rocky Run Middle School. In Fall 2020, Lanier-based Rising 7th and 8th Grade Center-eligible students will be required to attend the Lanier Level IV Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Schultz, thank you. Ms. Palchek, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, very briefly. In addition to those we've mentioned tonight, Principal Leonard is here, joining us in the audience. Still remember knocking on her door years ago, but I just want to thank, again, staff, the city board, superintendents, current and past superintendents in the city of Fairfax, and Principal Leonard, and our elementary school principals, who have worked tirelessly over more than two years now, to ensure that, with staff, our staff, who've worked hard to ensure that we had a center that was ready to go, that there was, there was the need, the desire from the community, and we heard one of our speakers tonight saying how important it is to the community, and also that it was done appropriately, that we took the time to ensure staff were trained, that we found the right balance at the elementary school, and have started with grouping students this year to really ensure, as was said, the success of the program, which I know, we know is so important to the community. So just want to thank all of the partners. I know it's been a big team effort, lots of advocacy on behalf of the city, the community, the principals, who have shown their leadership in ensuring success for our kids in the program. So just want to thank them and our staff, who have worked with both boards throughout the process, and I look forward to seeing the success of this great new program.
Ms. Schultz, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, as, again, people may not think, oh, Springfield District and Lanier, but other than the city of Fairfax students, the most number of students at Lanier and Fairfax High School come from the Springfield District. And having the ability to have appropriate education, particularly, sometimes we spend a lot of time talking about lots of other things, but the needs of gifted students and to receive resources close to where they live, I think is very, very important. I know there was expressed earlier, I was in another meeting, but I heard the concern about the transition plan, and the magnitude of that is so important to get right from the outset in terms of professional development, in terms of a cohort that's available for the students, that I think what has been developed by staff is really the best in the long run. We can't make policy decisions or decisions about implementation of plans that are best for right now, it has to be best for the long term. And so while I appreciate that some parents would really like to have, have it all and have it all now, that really the best decision is crafted and way this motion is put forward, and it may be disappointing to some, but I really believe that this is in the best interest of the overall best academic outcome for these students.
Okay, thank you. This is an important advancement for the Falls Church, I'm Fairfax City pyramid, and as many of us have looked at making sure that we have the appropriate services within each pyramid, because then that helps for the articulation of cohorts of children going up. So this does improve that for the students who will be coming to Fairfax City High School. So I think this is an excellent advancement. Mr. Moon, did you wish to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair, actually, I am going to support a motion. However, since we all received a letter from PTA President of one of the elementary schools being affected by this, this change, and there was a very detailed explanation of how the process went through and what some of the challenges might be from Dr. Procesteo, if he could ask, I know that I have not given you a heads up that I may ask you to do this, but could you address some of the things mentioned in the letter, Dr. Procesteo?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you, Mr. Moon. So we did receive some questions from the Willow Springs community PTA president regarding the process for opening the center, and I think it's important just to remember that a few things that's important for our community, remember. We had a pretty extensive community engagement process, again, led by Principal Leonard, who did a great job inviting the community to come into the school, have lots of opportunities to hear about the plan, to hear about all the actions that Lanier has taken to be ready to open the new center. We did conduct a community survey, and we had 350 respondents respond to the community survey, and only 7% of those responding to the survey indicated in the comments section that they were opposed to opening the new center. So the overwhelming majority of folks that responded to the community engagement process in the survey are in favor of opening the new center. And the third issue that the constituent really raised was thinking about trying to just move students based on the closest center location to their residence. And of course, the way our policies and regulations are written, you would want to do a boundary adjustment if you were going to make any adjustments with respect to student locations in terms of center placement closer to their base school. So those were the main issues that were raised, and we appreciate that constituent's feedback. We've provided a response to that constituent, and we're happy to answer any questions that he or anybody else in the community might have.
Thank you.
I'd also like to add that the base middle school for Willow Springs is Lanier, so that's where the general education progressed to, so that this actually then helps to combine everybody into, within the pyramid. Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanderson.
I want to echo the thanks of Ms. Palchek for the hard work that went into preparing for a center to be opened at Lanier Middle School. I think it was that professional approach that ensured that the faculty and staff are ready to receive these kids starting next year and have reached out into the community to, to get a groundswell of support and excitement about this center. It should be commended, so thank you for that. And I also think that the more often that we look at increasing opportunities for our students, especially in the middle school area, to be able to take advantage, it allows for our students to, to take advantage of the pedagogy of problem-based learning and critical thinking, but also do it within the pyramid in which that they, they'll go on to high school. Too often, we have kids that go to a middle school for an AAP center, and then their high school experience is to another pyramid, so I welcome this opportunity.
Okay, I will call for the vote on the motion to open the new Advanced Academic Center at Lanier Middle School, and it also lays out the gradual population of that new center. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous, it passes. Thank you very much. And with Ms. Darnett Kofax away from the table. Great, congratulations.
She just raised her hand.
And Ms. Darnett Kofax just voted on the way in. Thank you. So that is unanimous, and actually, we still have Ms. Hines and Ms. McLaughlin absent. Next is our consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01, approve the minutes of the December 4th- 6.01, approve the minutes of the December 14, 2017 regular school board meeting. 6.02, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. New business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, authorize the division superintendent or his or her designee with the advice of legal counsel for the school division to negotiate, execute, deliver, and administer on behalf of the school board the residential sale agreement and all other documents associated with the sale of the house on Lot 9, address 7423 Foundation Way, Springfield, Virginia, 2015 of Spring Village Estates. By the way, this is the home that has been built by our students through our FAP program. We're very proud of the work of our students, and we're very grateful to the help of our teachers and contractors who help teach our young people in construction skills. 7.02, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Holly Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board this evening's FY 2019 proposed budget. Superintendent matters. Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. Just a couple of things for the evening. We've had some interesting weather this past week. I thought I'd provide some insight into that. I know weather is one of those decisions that superintendents frequently are asked to make, and it's among the most difficult decisions. I saw in Lynchburg personally, and even from afar during my time in Fairfax, in my absence from Fairfax, the impact of what people consider a quote-unquote "wrong" decision can have on a system and its reputation. I'm proud to let you know that as I approached these issues my first year here as superintendent, I want to just share with the community and you all some parameters around these decisions and notifications. My first principle in making inclement weather decisions is always going to be about putting our students' and employees' safety first. When I can, I am going to do everything in my power, working with my team, to notify folks early. We want to do so for parents so they can have plenty of time to make arrangements for their kids. We're also going to work to provide a rationale when possible. The decision to close Monday rather than close early was because an early close would have put our elementary buses out on the streets during the forecast inclement weather. Those kind of rationales, I think, helps the community understand why we're arriving at the decisions that we do. I just want to even mention to you, I got, you get a lot of stuff from a lot of folks when you're in this role, and I got a letter just yesterday from a student who said, "I wanted to let you know briefly how much your consideration for our safety of students means the world to our household, Dr. Braybrand. We're thankful for the consideration." And here's the sentence I want everybody to hear. "My mother does eight trips every morning to get me and my siblings to school on time. Your cancellations have not only kept us safe, but kept her safe, and she is all we have. I just wanted you to know it means the world." So very, very, a powerful reminder of the impact of all of the decisions we make on our folks. And I'm glad that many, many of our folks in our community felt we made the right decisions. And for those who thought that we did not, I just respectfully say that I'm going to always share, as I said, the rationale, and hopefully you'll find a consistency in my decision-making process. I wanted to also share real quick, I got some great news. Sometimes other folks email me in. Our director of bands at McLean High School, Chris Wies, was proud to announce that the McLean High School bands were chosen as the 2017 Sutherland Flag of Honor awarded by the John Philip Sousa Foundation. I don't know whether you've already shared that, Chairman Strauss, and I just beat you to the punch, so I apologize if it was in your own notes.
That's happy to share that. It's wonderful.
They're one of the only schools, McLean High School, in the U.S. to have ever received two of those rewards or awards. Was actually also received by McLean back in the year 2000. It's just amazing to see that kind of excellence repeat itself. And speaking of excellence repeating itself, and excellence in general, I do want to begin where I, in where I began really tonight with my budget presentation. People, people, excellence, investing in the family. Kristin Michael has been an example of excellence over a decade in Fairfax County Public Schools. You've already said all the wonderful things, but the reality is, it's true. And even behind Kristin and her office, one, she talked about an amazing mentor, Susan Quinn, and we can talk about Susan Quinn, and we'll talk about her later. But even behind Kristin and her office are so many examples of excellence that I think this board never gets to see, this community never gets to see. And I'm humbled, because in one way, by working my whole career through here, I've got to work with all these different folks. It isn't just great leaders. First of all, everybody can be a leader in the system. You don't need the title. And position by position, whatever your position is, we have some of the most amazing people in the world doing it. We're going to miss Kristin, but I got to tell you one other thing. There are a lot of excellent people in Fairfax County Public Schools. Sometimes some of those folks decide to leave, and sometimes some of those folks come home. So we'll just see how the story goes. I didn't know what happened when I left, and here I am now. So I wish her the best. Thank you, Kristin, for all you've done, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Next, we have a report from governance from Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The governance committee met yesterday, January 10th, and we've been discussing for several months now, updates on policy and regulation on the Monopol Program. And we will be ready to present to the board at a work session our findings, and I thank Jeff Plattenberg and his team for working on this with us. And we did come to consensus as our board, as our committee, and be presented to the board at the February work session. We also talked about the upcoming school board retreat, and we are still in the process of finalizing details on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have board matters, and I'll begin with Ms. Keys-Gomara.
Well, I just want to say I hope everybody enjoyed their holiday. I was happy to be able to spend my time with my family. Everybody was home, and all my college students made it clear that I needed to go back to work to finish paying for the food bill. But it was wonderful. As we go into 2018, I will be continuing to set up a schedule to visit new schools. I think, I'm not quite sure where I'm going to start, but we'll figure that out. I will be putting out a newsletter shortly, listing office hours. I also want to just say that I had worked with Kristin years ago when I was on the Budget Committee, and I'm a little sad that I won't be able to have my first year as a board member with her at the helm. So, but I'm sure we'll, I'll have plenty of help from my colleagues. And I look forward to working out the budget process with the focus that Dr. Braybrand mentioned, which is that on our employees and properly compensating. And I did write down what, one thing that he said, everybody needs to believe that they are valued. And I really believe that, and I, we are certainly working for that. And I just, I do not want to necessarily ignore the elephant in the room. We did have one speaker that was, didn't necessarily, I think, pick up that we do focus on that, but I know that everybody at this diocese is working to make sure that our students, as well as our staff, understand how valued they are. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you. I had the honor last week to speak at the Hayfield AP Scholars Reception. Where both seniors and graduate, recent graduates were recognized. That's always a wonderful time. So I thank the Hayfield Administration for inviting me to do that. You talk about dedicated employees. On the snow day, on Monday, there was an Advanced Academic Programs Advisory Committee there, and it was a panel with principals and counselors from K through 12 levels. And all of them decided to come and have, when the staff administrator realized that the committee members were coming, the entire panel showed up, and I thank all of those people who came out that day, and they spoke about their implementation of the young scholars programs in their school. It was informative and showed the dedication of our group of principals and administrators. And then yesterday, I had the opportunity to be part of the SCIFT Governance Committee. We met to talk about the school readiness plan. It has some budget implications in it. We also talked about the behavioral health recommendations with its budget implications, and we got an update on the school attendance action plan. If you have further questions on that, I'll be happy to share that with you. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
So I was attending some other board business earlier, and I didn't get a chance to acknowledge Ms. Michael's pending departure. I want to wish her well. I'm sure she's not going to miss our round-the-clock, year-round budget questions and response cycles, and I'm not exactly sure how we're going to do it without her and without Ms. Quinn eventually, but I just wanted to wish them both well. I do want to acknowledge the difficulty that Dr. Braybrand and Mr. Plattenberg have in the whole snow day closure, delay, don't delay, multiple days in a row. And as one of the few remaining parents on the board of children not only in secondary school, but also in elementary school, I know this is a very, very painful subject for parents and for families, and the agony of, you know, what happens with your child if you have to go to work and you don't have a flexible schedule. But I will also say that amount of dedication that goes into evaluating overnight and in the early morning hours, and assessing a 400-square-mile county that is vast and has very disparate road conditions from one to another, and everything that goes into understanding that teachers have children who are in school and the multiple rounds of transportation that are necessary, it's very, very difficult. It's one of the most public things. I actually saw a newscaster on Twitter admonish us. It's not fun. And, you know, I live and die by the sword that makes these decisions, and was crawling up the walls myself and couldn't believe, you know, that we had, you know, one more day. But in the end, I just, I want everybody to understand that these decisions are not made cavalierly, and the second that a new driver, a teenage driver, is in a catastrophic incident, or a bus is in a catastrophic incident and we lose a life, whether or not somebody was able to go to work that day, the perspective will change greatly. So I know those are hard, but I do commend the advance notification. I do think that communication is key, and the help of advance notification and then the explanation of why we made some of our decisions, I think, helps build and collaborate with the community in advance and build trust that we really are trying to make the best decisions. So I do want to commend the leadership team for the work that they did on that, and the great news is, is that everybody is safe. They may be frustrated, but they are definitely safe. And then as everybody gets back to, we're getting close to an end of a quarter, I am going to beseech, on behalf of the older students, that everything be done as we come to a close of the quarter and the semester in such a way that we keep in mind the mental health and well-being of our students, and everything that can be done to accommodate a student while not destroying the integrity of our grading processes. But listening and understanding as we work towards improving work across team teaching and the professional development necessary to meet the needs of students, but understand that we have created a pressure cooker, that we don't necessarily need to put, you know, adult-sized goals on teenage-sized individuals. I hope that that, Dr. Braybrand, the no homework over the holiday break is something that, you know, we continue to collaborate with our educators and our administrators. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moon?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to bring one additional piece of information about Sutherland Flag of Honor recipients to our superintendent and my colleagues on the board. You know, in addition to McLean High School, if I'm not mistaken, it's a Woodson, W.T. Woodson, also won twice back in 1995 and 2011. But I'm, of course, I'm proud of McLean High School's achievements.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I echo Ms. Schultz's comments on the appreciation for all of the hard work of Mr. Plattenberg's staff, as well as yours, Dr. Braybrand, in the difficult times of making weather decisions. I also want to encourage everybody, next Monday is Martin Luther King's birthday, and it's a holiday in our schools. I hope that each family takes the opportunity of the holiday to use it as a learning experience. We have wonderful opportunities in the D.C. metro area where you can do a field trip with your family and learn about this important civil rights leader. And as we close tonight, I would like to leave you with a quote that one of our teachers, or actually one of our principals, sent out today from Martin Luther King. "The function of education is to teach one to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." And I think that is reflected, I hope, in our new budget and our strategic plan.
Mr. McElhene?
I'd like to wish everyone a very happy 2018, although many people have started off on a sick note, including myself. Whether you've eaten romaine lettuce, or in my case, you've had the monster flu that's going around, please, everyone, take care of yourselves. Don't come to school if you're very sick.
Ms. Palchak?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Braybrand for your endless optimism. 2018 is already looking rosier with our budget presentation and the thought of Ms. Michael returning to us in the future. But honestly, I want to join my colleagues in wishing everyone a happy 2018. As I said to my students today, please wash your hands all day long and stay healthy. I also want to thank Dr. Duran and Dr. Presidio for working with MSAOC. I think, I didn't get a chance, unfortunately, to be at the whole meeting, but it was a very, I think, productive discussion. I appreciate the input you're gathering from the community, and we look forward to hearing your recommendations in March as to the position and how we will be working to help end our achievement gap. So looking forward to seeing that in 2018. To the snow closures, I was in recess duty when a retired substitute had received a very concerned text from her daughter, who is in County Maryland, and had just been told that they were closing two hours early, and she had no idea how to pick up her child while at work. So I know we have concerns for our working parents and the safety of our kids, and really appreciate the thought we put into helping parents, especially a single mom in this case, know how to ensure her kid's safety. And finally, want to echo Ms. Corbett Sanderson. I'm very much looking forward to, I believe, my third year at Day of Service with the Wakeville Mill Elementary School Stamp Program at the JCC. Monday, I think some other board members will be joining me. Always a great opportunity, and highly, highly recommend finding a way to be of service in our community as a family. It also helps the social, emotional development of our children. So thank you all, and have a great evening.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I-
Again, Happy New Year to everybody, and I'm pleased to enjoy the Martin Luther King holiday. First, I want to commend our student representative on the board because she was able to, in one impassioned, to speak, change an aspect of our budget from last year, which was student activities fee. Immediately following her talk, the superintendent immediately changed and is now proposing to eliminate the fee. And so my congratulation goes out to you. You're very, very strong board work. I also want to thank a group of people that actually were working tonight. The Family Life Education Citizen Advisory Committee met tonight. As you probably, as my board members, fellow board members know, but for the community, they are looking at in detail the lesson plans for each grade in the Family Life Education program. It's a huge amount of work, and they take their responsibility very seriously. And personally, I just want to thank my own representative and his work on the board. He contacted me this week and wanted to talk about the things that he was seeing in the materials. So congratulations, or thank you to those members of the committee who are doing that work, unsung heroes, frankly, of our school system. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
It's good to be back with all of my colleagues. I just want to wish everybody a wonderful 2018.
Unfortunately, we have to go back into closed. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss and consider disciplinary matters concerning five students pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Evans, seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor? Thank you. That vote is unanimous. We are in closed. Thank you very much.